We on?
Yep.
All right, arise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me in a moment with silent prayer. All right, we will call this meeting to order. Are there any visitors' remarks concerning the agenda?
Hi, my name is Kevin Barnes from Wise Ox. I have a question for the board about the last year's budget, revenue budget was about 71 million. This year's coming up is about 77. But you only had a revenue of 40 some odd million. How are you going to make that 77 if you didn't make 71 this year?
How that happens is normally it's grants funding that comes through, it's pass-throughs from the state and federal government that makes up those differences. Our general fund budget remains fairly consistent. It doesn't change a whole lot. What does change in the budget, the overall budget, is grants that we get for different projects, bridge funding through Penda, a number of different things. Monies come in from different sources that facilitate some, like bridges that we do, capital improvements that we do. So that's what fluctuates. If fluctuates, it could be as high as, we've had it up as high as $85 million at times, but it's capital projects that generally drive that difference.
Okay. Well, I would like to request that the board consider living within the means of the current tax rates versus raising the taxes, just like the rest of the community residents have to do, have to live within our means and can't really ask for more money because we need this or that. Sorry.
No, thank you, appreciate that. Any other?
Yeah. The board has accused me of being part of the problem of why taxes are being increased, specifically Commissioner McLanko, because of my records requests, claiming that it has cost $50,000 for those records requests. The only reason records requests would cost more than the bare minimum is because of incompetence. Your open records officer has done a horrible job handling records. I suspect most of it has to do with you guys and putting too much work on her, but the majority of my appeals have been because records haven't been provided when they're supposed to be. And you get your attorneys involved every single time, spending a tremendous amount of money on your attorneys for no reason, just like when probation wanted raises, like everybody else was getting. And you spent, what, $200,000 and some thousand dollars over the last couple of years fighting with them for, all they wanted was the same as everybody else. And they even cost less money than other departments do for you guys, but you had to fight it. And that has cost a tremendous amount of money. You wasted a ton of money on that. You wasted a ton of money on the records requests when you could just be providing records. And it's incompetence on your part, and it costs this county a tremendous amount of money when you add it all up together of all the things that you do that you don't need to be doing for wasting money. And I really hope next year you guys do a better job of that, instead of wasting our money and raising our taxes in one lump sum and just squeezing us over nothing. It's ridiculous.
Thank you. All right, unfinished business. Consider approving the minutes of November 13th, 2025. So moved.
So moved. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. New business. Consider proclaiming December 11th, 2025 as sanctity of human life day in Bradford County. And I believe we have Crystal Salzman who's going to read the proclamation for us.
Bradford County Commissioners offer the sanctity of human life proclamation. Whereas the belief that all human life is intrinsically valuable, sacred, and created in the image of God, and whereas the founders of the United States have set forth a precedent declaring that all are created equal and endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, such as life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and whereas Hopegate Pregnancy and Parenting Center values the life at conception, values the life of the mother and the formation of the family, and whereas since the passage of Roe versus Wade on January 22nd, 1973, over 65 million babies have been aborted, leaving insurmountable damage to the multitudes of mothers, fathers, and families in its wake, and whereas nearly 36,000 abortions occurred in Pennsylvania in 2023, the Friends of Hopegate have elected to place these baby footprint images, each representing 1,000 lives, to lost abortion, and Hopegate Centers are endeavoring to offer abortion recovery and support to affected, and now therefore we, the Bradford County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Thursday, December 11th, 2025, as the sanctity of human life and abortion recovery in Bradford County. And we will have that displayed in January for the Sanctity of Human Life Month at the Courthouse Square.
Thank you, Crystal. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second? I'll second it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Let me comment though.
Okay.
So, Crystal, I want to thank you for the tremendous work you guys do at the Endless Mountains Pregnant Care Centers, and I know that you save lives. And, you know, although a lot of people can get tangled up into the health of the mother, which is critically important and all that, but using abortion as a means of birth control is terrible. If you take that 68 million people, and you do the multiplier about working age people, children from that, is there any wonder why we don't have enough people to fill jobs in our country? It's amazing to me that people just overlook that little statistic. But the work that you do, and I know you save lives, and I just appreciate it, and I want to applaud you, and applaud the center and the great work that you guys do.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I abstain.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, consider approving Resolution 2025-29, setting the Bradford County budget in the amount of $77,468, $468,408 for 2026, with a county real estate millage of 12.055 on each dollar assessed valuation of 50% of the market value, and approve setting the 2026 salary schedule with a 2.5% pay increase for all county employees not covered under a union contract.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, if you want a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Before we vote on this, I just want to say, just highlight a few things. A lot of what goes into these budgets, and I will tell you, our fiscal department does a phenomenal job, our department heads do a phenomenal job, and our elected officials do a phenomenal job of working with the budget year in and year out. This is not an easy thing. It's not an easy thing at any level of government, and I will tell you, this year has been especially challenging because of the state budget being delayed for the number of months that it was, and then the federal government shutdown because a large percentage, I want to say probably almost 70% of our budget comes through either state or federal dollars. And without those dollars, the services that we provide are mandated by state and federal laws. We don't have a choice. We have to provide those services. And if we don't have the money, we've got to find the money to be able to provide those services. It's not an easy task, and they do a phenomenal job. And I will say that all of our department heads, our elected officials, live well within their means. The increase, and none of us like tax increase, I will tell you. I came to this decision kicking and screaming, quite frankly, because I do not like tax increases. I've said it was one of the absolute last things that we would do. We would do anything short of that. And we're at that point right now because, you know, if we could talk people into, the biggest cost drivers in our budget are human services and the criminal justice system. And when I say that, each inmate in our correctional facility costs us about $100 a day. When you average 180 people, day in and day out, do the numbers, huge portion of our budget. The discretionary part of our budget, the part that we actually can change a little bit, is very small. Again, most of it is fixed costs that we have to provide the services. So, you know, I don't like it any more than anyone else, but we have gone 17 years without a tax increase. The tax increase that we're proposing in this budget amounts to less than 1% a year for those 17 years. In that period of time, the cost of living has gone up about 35%. So the cost of living has gone up double what the percentage is that we're talking about raising taxes. Again, it doesn't make, I don't, not trying to make it sound good, it's just the reality of the world we live in. So, you know, I appreciate the work that all of our elected officials do, I appreciate the work that our department heads do, our people in the fiscal department do, they do a yeoman's job of maintaining a good, fiscally sound county. So with that, I will...
Well, I'd like to make a statement too, if I could.
Sure.
So, right off from what Commissioner Miller just said, when we talk about the jails, you know, up until today, we collected just over $10 million. So when you look at the $80 million budget, they're about, from year to year, it pluses down and up. 10 million or 11 million, now 12, is all we control, that's it. And when you have your prison system, which is run very well, and that's something we, there's no ifs, ands, or buts, you have to have it, takes about $6 million of that, and then you run the rest of the county government on that, it makes it very difficult. And it's like Commissioner Miller, you know, it makes me sick to my stomach to do this. And over the last 17, 17 years ago, I did not vote for that tax increase, with about $300,000. So, you look at 300,000 out of, you know, 10 million at the time, it was, it was a nothing. So really, you could say that we run county government, all commissioners that have been here since 2004, without a tax increase is really pretty amazing. I know a lot of people around the state absolutely look at us as a fiscally sound-run county. Having said that, when you get into the, you know, the state and federal government, what they just did, especially the state government with their very ridiculous long budget impasse, when they owe us, again, what is about 7 million, I don't know where we're at today, we got some of it back in, but they owe us 7 million. 7 million out of collecting about 10 million from Children's Services. So it doesn't take a mathematician to sit there and look at all this, and it's our fiscal department led by Dan Thorpe, but it's also our county treasurer, Matt Allen, because those two guys work together to try to move funds around and make this county government work, because we never, we never stopped giving any services, you know, because there's a lot of people that have a lot of issues that need it. So although it makes me sick to my stomach, there was nowhere to go. And if you look at, you know, when you talk about the budget, living within your means, and I get it, look, I own property too, and we, you know, our county paying our taxes, no secret. School takes a big chunk, the county and local municipalities are left with the crumbs to try to operate on, but, and everybody works hard to do it. But when you look at our regular, the budget, and you look at each individual department, you will see that those people, year in and year, in and out of budgets, unless it's something they need specifically, maybe it's possibly mandated, but there certainly isn't any cushion, if they live within their means, it's amazing how that structured part of their budgets never change, and they don't ask for much. Now you get into the employees and the uncontrollables, everybody else at home is seeing from the last, you know, for four years of high, terrible inflation, you know, it hurt us too, it hurt our county employees. So like Commissioner Miller, you know, I know it's a, with a terrible budget tied, it is across the state, talked to a lot of different commissioners, I mean, if they could not jump off a bridge, I'm not going to, but the state impasse affected them terribly. And there's a lot of commissioners in counties that have raised taxes up until then, you know, and the years gone by, and still had to raise taxes. So it's a terrible situation, but, you know, we vowed to not raise taxes, to live within our means, and to cut what we, what we can, and we are cutting. I mean, we're doing our prison, our prison medicine costs us about $4,000 a day. We're working now to get that cut possibly in half, in half, but it's tough. And when somebody says, well, you know, 50,000, that's just 500,000, doesn't matter, yeah, it does, because if you take 10 of those, you know, now you're a lot of money, and now you affect it. So, you know, just be mindful that, again, you know, up until today, we only collected over $10 million out of 70 or 80 or pluses budget, and it should really tell you that the amount of money that we control is very, very small. So with that, I'd like to thank, you know, the board commissioners, Dan, everybody working together in this effort, and it wasn't easy.
Mr. Chairman, if I may? Sure. I also want to echo the work of Dan Thorpe in providing us with, you know, the meat and potatoes of this proposed budget. I think it's important in any budget time to understand how taxation works, because sometimes we treat, we treat it as something that is mysterious, but it really isn't. For anybody who has served on a school board, for anybody who has served as a township supervisor or a councilperson or commissioner, millage, which is in part, you know, really what we're doing today with a, with a budget, is, it's part of a three-legged stool. So we first have to look at what is your tax base from which you can apply in order to determine how much tax revenue you're going to get. So what's your tax base? What is the assessed value of the property and improvements? And then the third is the millage rate. And so those three all play together. And so while we, as commissioners in a particular budget year, can adopt a budget which includes a millage rate, every year, we always have to think about, I think, and everybody has to think about the other two legs of the stool, which is, what is your tax base and what is your assessed value? The concern I have is the more the assessed value deviates from our market value, our common level ratio changes, and the effect that that has, and we've spoken in past meetings about the effect of when you have a commercial property owner who comes in and asks the Board of Assessment Appeals to do an adjustment, because every time that their assessed value gets reduced, that has a, has an effect on the assessed value of that parcel, which in turns has an effect on the amount of the taxes that a particular school district can receive, borough or township can receive, and obviously the county can receive. So it's, it's, you know, I think this is, this is one part of it, but I think we should collectively have a discussion as a county about that, and we should also have a discussion, you know, maybe this is, this is an opportunity to look at what some other counties do, because what some other counties do is they will actually do very incremental increases year over year, or every three years or something, in an attempt to maybe not achieve indexing to inflation, but at least for it to be a little more incremental. And so we're here now, but I think it is an opportunity in future years for us to look at that, because I think that there's an opportunity there. I will also say that when you do incremental tax rates, one of the benefits that you have is it's not just a big increase in a particular year, but you have the benefit of that amount that you do a small increase on every year thereafter until the next potential increase, you have that value. And if you don't use that money, to the gentleman's point about living within one's means, to the extent that there's money left, you can then put that in to gain some interest and hopefully have it there later, so that if you do need to do an increase, again, you have at least a little bit more of a buffer. So it, I think it's worthwhile for all residents to just have these conversations. There's no right or wrong, because people can have different opinions on how to address tax policy. This proposed budget is one means of addressing that, but I think that it's, it's part of a larger conversation. I also think that we, as citizens, can have those conversations respectfully, candidly, honestly, and hopefully collectively arrive at a good solution going forward. So that's, that's where I am. But I echo what has been said about the increased costs. I mean, that's the one that nobody has any control over. A dollar in 2009 to have the same buying power in 2025, you would need a dollar 51. That's not me talking, that's, that's the CPI data from the Department of Labor. So I think, you know, that's one of those things, like we can't, our tax revenue does not, you know, for a given parcel, the tax revenue you get does not automatically index to inflation. It's the same, if there's no change in the value of the property, it's going to stay the same amount you collect year over year. And the only thing that's going to change is the amount that you have buying power for. So that's just an observation. So I agree it's a difficult year, but I think in order to cover what we do, I don't know what to do. So go ahead, I'm sorry, Commissioner McLanko.
Well, yeah, thanks. Well, we're all got our, you know, we all have our, our own views on taxation, of course, you know, it's only if absolutely necessary. But having said that, through the natural gas period, we saw a lot of growth, hotels, garages, shops, homes, people had money, had lots of revenue to our county, which helped boost the amount of revenue that we collected just due to capitalism. And now we have a discussion county-wide about data centers. Now listen, for the record, I think, I know I, and these other two gentlemen can speak to themselves, but I think undoubtedly, we're not going to want to see, we're not let energy costs go up, not force anybody out of their homes, but we need a serious county-wide conversation, because the only way that you can avert tax increases is through growth and prosperity. And that's why as we talk about data centers, because Bradford County is right in the bull's eye, and there's a couple of different ways that we're learning already, I mean, I know that the three of us are trying to come up to date, and Commissioner Miller can talk about bringing a speaker in, and we talked about having a town hall to understand it. But without growth, there's only one other way that you can get to run government, no matter how lean you make it. So if we go forward in the data center conversation, know that it'll affect the entire county, you know, if there's prosperity through, you know, new growth and development, or remember, nobody's going to sell out our landowners, it isn't going to happen, but we have to be serious about it, because we experienced growth through natural gas, and that's added to the coffers throughout the school districts and everything. And I just recently asked Eric Matthews' assessment to figure out the taxes on a power plant. Power plant pays the school district about a half a million dollars a year, that's real money. They pay us, I think, a couple hundred grand a year, and the township, I think, just under 40. So you can see from one development what that means to help offset raising taxes. So we need to be mindful, we need to be unified as a county, and we need to discuss data centers and everything together, make sure they're right, but also understand that throughout growth and prosperity, there's only one other way that you can run government, especially when you have runaway costs that we've realized in the last handful of years. But with that, I'm ready to vote, so.
All right, before we vote, I just, I'll just a little bit elaborate, just a little bit more on what Commissioner McLanko said, and I, and again, I just want to highlight one of the things we did back in 2014, which was relative to the gas development that was taking place, we actually lowered taxes by 5%. I think it was year 2014, I believe. Not making an excuse for, it's not, I'm just highlighting what has taken place. Now with the data centers, yes, we're looking at getting a couple individuals in from, one from Frederick County, Maryland, and the other one from Loudoun County, Virginia. We sat through a presentation, and it was a very abbreviated presentation, and I'm not one to believe the pie in the sky attributes of what all is or isn't going to take place, because I believe everybody, and I'm for development, for, obviously, our, you know, free market system that we have, capitalism, but I also believe that we all need to enter all this stuff eyes wide open. We need to understand the benefits and/or the challenges that come with anything. So again, with eyes wide open, and that's why we're talking about getting these people up here to talk to us, to just explain all the different nuances of what they experienced going through the development that took place in their counties.
Yeah, just one last thing. So I agree with what Commissioner McLanko and what Commissioner Miller indicated regarding, you know, understanding what AI data centers have to offer, but understand that those will not be, even if developed in the manner that they've spoken about, going to be any particular silver bullet. It requires a diversified infrastructure and diversified industrial base. That's why it's important for the commissioners, as well as with our partners at Central Brad Progress Authority and Northern Tier Regional Planning and Development Corporation, to be aggressive in trying to attract businesses to Bradford County. Because absolutely, to Commissioner Miller's, Commissioner McLanko's point, a broader tax base allows for there to not at least be a degree of tax and millage increase year over year that you would otherwise potentially have to have absent the expansion of the tax base, as you have increasing costs. I will also say this, Act 13 was, impact fee money was absolutely a saving grace for this county. But understand that the way that the, the calculation, the equation that is set forth by law for those, the way it works, you are going to, you need to have wells spud and continue to have them, because the period of time that the impact fee is imposed for a particular well is 15 years. And so at the end of that 15-year cycle as to that well, the impact fee money essentially dries up relative to that well. And so there needs to be an understanding that as wells start, that were maybe drilled years ago, start to roll off that 15-year cycle, you either have to have a replacement of it, or you will see a reduction in the impact fee. And that is just a reality. And you're already starting to see year over year in the past five years, a reduction of the Act 13 fees, impact fees that have come into the county. So while the impact fees are a portion or a segment, and have thankfully allowed us to do a lot of wonderful development of our infrastructure in our county, whether it's the 911 center, 911 towers, our fiber projects that we're working on with Central Brad Progress Authority, our bridges remediation, all of these are wonderful uses of infrastructure, or corrections of infrastructure with impact fee money, but the ability to have the type of expansive impact in your community is going to reduce as those fees go down. So this is why collectively, there has to be a broad strategy going forward to increase that tax base in order to make sure that we have what we need going forward.
All right, with that, we have a, I believe we have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the following rates for election workers, judge of elections, inspector of elections, clerks, and constables, and the number, that number has not changed from previous years.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Did you say something, Doug?
Yeah, we need people to step forward.
Oh, I know we do. I know we do. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise setting the date, time, and location of Bradford County Planning Commission 2026 meeting dates. The meeting dates will be held at 6:00 PM at the Bradford County Department of Public Safety Building as... Safety Building as follows: January 20th, February 17th, March 17th, April 21st, May 19th, June 16th, July 21st, August 18th, September 50th, October 20th, November 17th, and December 15th, 2026.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise setting the date, time, and location of the Superfund Amendment and Authorization Act, or SARAH III meetings. The meetings will be held at 3:00 PM at the Bradford County Department of Public Safety Building as follows: February 17th, April 21st, June 16th, August 18th, October 20th, and December 15th, 2026.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise the date, time, and location of meetings of the Bradford County Commissioners and Salary Board, as well as the assessment of elections when applicable, at 10:00 AM on the second and fourth Thursday of every month in the Commissioners' Conference Room Courthouse, Tewana P8, except for legal holidays.
So moved.
So moved.
We have two motions, and I guess a second.
I'll take the second. He can take the motion.
All right, we have a motion to second. All in favor signify by...
Just a clarification. So it's assessment, it's gonna be for Commissioners, Salary Board, and then assessment and/or elections when applicable. Thank you. Okay, just clarifying. Thank you.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Hope that wasn't breaks.
No, that was strong going in at orange juice.
Okay. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise setting the date, time, and location of the Bradford County Retirement Board meetings. The meetings will be held at 10:00 AM in the Commissioners' Office located in the Bradford County Courthouse as follows: February 10th, May 5th, August 11th, and November 10th, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Just a clarification. This came up in one of the town halls that I was at recently, and it is this: anybody who is a pensioner under the county pension board who has questions or comments to make, this is the opportune time to come to these retirement board meetings and raise any questions or concerns you have. That's what they're there for, and they're public meetings, and anyone is welcome to come and present those questions.
For retirees.
Exactly.
For potential retirees.
Exactly.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider authorizing the chief clerk to legally advertise setting the date, time, and location of the Agricultural Land Preservation Board meetings. The meetings will be held at 1:00 PM in the Stoll Natural Resource Center in Wysocks as followed: February 17th, May 19th, August 18th, and November 17th of 2026.
So moved.
Hello. All right, I'll second that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion of aye, motion carries unanimously. Well, I guess.
You and I, 2-0, and I guess we'll treat his as a abstention.
You just call him there. You can't call him up.
It's called buffering.
Hi, this is Doug.
I thought this was like an intermission during a play.
Buffering.
The intermission, everybody goes...
When you lose your signal, you're buffering. Think about the terms we use now that you couldn't even imagine what they were 20 years ago. What's buffering?
You mean buffing?
Well, buffering used to be boundaries around property lines and stuff like that.
You back?
Yeah, sorry about that. I just hit a dead spot.
Okay, you're on.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Consider approving Resolution 2025-30 authorizing Bradford County to request local share assessment grant in the amount of $589,707 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for personatory software upgrades and authorize the chief clerk to... Chief clerk and the grants administrator as the officials to execute all documents and agreements to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Just wanna commend our personatory for working towards this initiative. It'll be good for our county and for the personatory.
And our grants administrator for helping.
Oh, absolutely. But, but I mean, I'm glad we're applying for this grant.
Yes.
Yeah, just real quick, Tammy Hart is doing a phenomenal job in that personatory office, not only, you know, work-wise, but she's got a string line that looks great. So yeah, hats off to everybody getting this grant.
We haven't got it yet. We're applying for it.
Nah, we're gonna get it.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-31 authorizing Bradford County to request local share assessment grant in the amount of seven... Or $297,500 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for historic fire tower rehabilitation and authorize the Bradford County Chief Clerk and the Grants Administrator as the officials to execute all documents and agreements to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Just for clarification, this would be for relative to getting the... A fire tower erected on Mount Pisgah?
Yes.
Okay. The historic fire tower.
The donated fire tower that we wanted.
Correct, but just working on getting it done.
The tower was donated.
Correct.
Yes.
Needs to be rehabilitated before it's erected.
Sure.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-32 approving the adoption of a procurement policy for the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG-funded projects.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-33 approving the Minority Business Enterprise and Women Business Enterprise Participation Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDVG-funded projects.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving Resolution 2025-34 approving the adoption of Section 3 Participation Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program-funded projects.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an agreement between Bradford County and the Tewana Borough for exclusive use of 85 reserved parking spaces in the borough's municipal parking garage for an annualized sum of $40,800.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion?
Michelle, what is the term of that? Meaning, how many years is that for? It's a five-year term commencing on January 1 of next year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving bests Bradford-Sullivan-Tioga Transit First Quarter Medical Assistance Transportation, or MTA... Whatever it is, cost report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an application for Bradford County to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for Bradford County Adult Probation and Parole Grant in Aid in the amount of $84,435.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving an application from Bradford County to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Bradford County Treatment Court Grant in the amount of $100,000.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving a renewal between Bradford County and the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the Black Fly Suppression Program for 2026 in the amount of $59,400. And I believe we should rename that to the John Sullivan Black Fly Program because he was very instrumental in maintaining that through his years of service at the request of some people I won't name.
So notwithstanding the recommendation, I'm going to make a motion as specified on the agenda, not including the renaming of the program.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
All right. Chris will be very happy about this.
Yes.
Anyway, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the sale of parcel 62-075.00173-022-001, a repository sale as outlined in Section 627 of the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law, Act 542 of 1947, to Justin Adams for $100.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Just for clarification, I suspect this is a mobile home.
I'm...
It's a mobile home, Michelle?
Okay. I'm guessing you're right.
Okay.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider appointing Jamie Weiss to the Bradford County Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities for a term of three years effective January 1, 2026, and ending on December 31, 2029.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Jamie has been a long-term member of the MHID Board and does a wonderful job. She's past chair of the MHID Board, and thank her for so many years of service, and I'm glad she's willing to do this again.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in...
Just a clarification. 26, 27, 28, this, as written, it says this would be for four years. This is a term of three years, so should that be 2028?
28.
Okay, so it's gonna end on just... I agree to the amendment of my prior motion, 2028.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider approving a renewal agreement between Bradford County and Coro for email security professional services in the amount of $11,980.80, and it is cybersecurity software.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And again, with that one, and the unfortunate part of the world we live in is that you constantly have to try to keep ahead of people that are trying to nefariously do things with your computers and your software and whatever else. So it's sad that we have to live in this world that we do, and that's part of why costs keep going up.
Before moving on to the next one, is this a correction of a Sunshine Act violation?
I don't believe it would be, and we can discuss that when we get to the... Get to the motion.
Consider ratifying action taken November 17, 2025, authorizing the chairman to sign a subscription agreement between Bradford County and Recoup... Regroup Mass Notification to provide emergency notifications. This is a three-year agreement in the amount of $12,000. And that's a three-year figure for the three years, $12,000.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Okay, so my understanding, Mr. Chairman, is, is that at some point in mid-November, it came to the attention of our Public Safety Director and our Emergency Management Coordinator that Code RED, which is our current emergency notification software, was it that they had had a data breach or some other type of a compromise?
Yes.
That was affecting the ability of Code RED to be effective and/or secure in the manner that it was intended?
Yes.
And so on that basis, there was a determination that we had to move forward with Regroup. And so I would, I would treat it as something we had to undertake on an emergency basis, and it would have been remiss of us not to undertake that.
We would have lost all the information on Code RED, and we would have had to recreate the whole thing.
We would not be moving in the, in the right direction. So I...
Just to verify, you didn't have a public meeting about it?
If it is emergency notification, you can take... Is our solicitor on?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gabriel, are you there? Chris, are you there?
Who are you asking for?
Chris Gabriel. He's supposed to be online.
Is Chris Gabriel on?
Okay. Hey, real quick, I'd like to add to that on cybersecurity, that Christine Glassner, I went down and met with her in Washington. She handled... She's leading the... She's not the president of all local government and tribal issues. And she says she's moved down to the Department of Homeland Security doing just that. And she told me, and I talked to her last, that the threats are unbelievable for everybody. And she, you know, and she knew it was bad, and then she got this...
Okay, hi, Chris. Can you hear us now?
...position, right, how bad it was.
Okay, okay. Sorry, Doug, to interrupt. So we've got, we've got Chris. We're gonna try to have it up as high as possible. Where are the speakers on? I'll hold my microphone next to it.
It should be coming through. What I was saying, and I hope that... I can repeat their work. This is just not part of the meeting for a public debate. I can't hear them. And everybody needs to be able to hear them in order to...
Chris?
My camera angle is such that I can't see exactly what...
Okay.
This is not the part of the meeting for what...
So Mr. Gabriel's saying this is not the time for questions.
Okay, then I'm just gonna say, I believe this is a Sunshine Act violation.
Moving on, thank you very much.
No, I am permitted to make a Sunshine Act violation statement.
You made it. We're so noted.
Chris, we can't hear you. I'm not sure why.
Okay, Chris, we've got to find another... If I call you in on my phone, maybe you can talk that way, okay? And we can all hear you. So just give me one minute.
I could just make the statement, and then we could move on.
Hello.
Hello, Chris. Can you, I can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
All right. Okay, so, okay, you were saying something?
Yes, so this is just not part of the meeting for either public comment or questions. So you have a piece of business, that you have a motion and a second, that commissioners can comment, but it's not a time for somebody to be asking questions or making statements.
Then I'll just make a Sunshine Act statement then.
You're permitted to make no statement whatsoever right now and wait till public comment at the end.
No, I'll make a Sunshine Act violation statement now. Are you telling me that I'm not legally entitled to that under the Sunshine Act?
I, I, yes, if you, if you can wait till public comment, you're not going to talk during the commissioner's part of the meeting. And again, I'm not, I'm not there, but it can't be disruptive to the meeting. And they're in the middle of conducting business right now.
Part of that business is acknowledging Sunshine Act violations brought up by individuals, correct?
No, they're conducting their business right now. If you want to make a statement, you certainly can.
I'd like to make a Sunshine Act violation statement.
You can wait till the end.
Because you did not advertise... Well, you don't have to advertise if it is an emergency.
So my recommendation is to have the speaker wait till the end or have it removed from the room.
Is the board recommending I be removed for making a Sunshine Act violation?
Yes, if you continue, yes.
They're recommending you be removed if you won't wait till public comment.
I am attempting to make a Sunshine Act violation statement.
We're going to move on.
Will I be arrested if I continue to try to make a Sunshine Act violation?
If you're in the meeting, you'll be removed.
Well, to remove me, you'd have to...
But you will have a time at the end when you can say whatever you want.
So I believe that you didn't do an agenda. You...
We're going to move on.
It doesn't matter what you believe. You just have to say it at the appropriate time, which is...
Any point, Mr. Appropriate.
Mr. Chairman called a question.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You still there, Doug?
Yes, I am.
All right. All right. None opposed? All in favor? We're moving on. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Consider approving the reappointment of myself to the Bradford County Conservation District Board for a one-year term beginning January 1st, 2026.
So moved. Second.
All right, we, we have a motion to second, and I'm going to abstain. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consider approving the reappointment or the appointment of Keith Heinbach as Farmer Director, Bradford County Conservation District for a four-year term from January 1st, 2026 to December 31st, 2029.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you. Consider approving the appointment of Brian Zidener as Public Director to the Bradford County Conservation District for a four-year term from January 1st, 2026 to December 31st, 2029.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the agreement between Bradford Sullivan County Mental Health in the following effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, names per the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the agreement between Bradford County Human Services and the following providers effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the amended agreement between Bradford County Children and Youth Services and the Community Options for Professional Services effective from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 inclusive.
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion to second. Well, two motions.
Treat his as the second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider the hires and transfers from Liam Lezick down through and including Anastasia Styret.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Other business, Christopher Dunham has been appointed in response to a court order by the Court of Common Pleas to the position of Domestic Relations Director effective December 3rd, 2025. And Dakota Bellinger has been appointed in response to a court order by the Court of Common Pleas to the position of Assistant Domestic Relations Director effective December 8th, 2025. And an executive session was held on December 8th, 2025 from 10:45 a.m. to 10:55 a.m. with legal counsel to discuss Bradford County Case Number 2024-IR-0087. Salary Board. Moving on to Salary Board. We have Matt Allen, our Treasurer here. There is no unfinished business. New business. Consider setting... Well, all right, hang on. Consider approving the creation of Deputy Director of Planning and Grants, Grade 24, effective January 1st, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Consider approving the reclassification of IT Tech 1 from Grade 19 to Grade 21 effective January 1st, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the reclassification of IT Tech 2 from Grade 20 to Grade 22 effective January 1st, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the creation of Sewer Plant Backup Operator Trainee Position, Grade 19, effective January 1st, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the reclassification of Sewer Plant Backup Operator from Grade 19 to Grade 23... What's that? Hello, Doug?
Oh, no, I just knocked on...
Oh. Sewer Plant Backup Operator from Grade 19 to Grade 23 effective January 1st, 2026.
So moved per the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the creation of Deputy Director Wastewater Treatment Plant, Grade 24, effective January 1st, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the reclassification of Administrative Assistant III to Office Manager in the District Attorney's Office, Grade 20, effective January 1st, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Consider approving the reclassification of the Administrative Assistant II to Discovery Coordinator in the District Attorney's Office, Grade G17, effective January 1st, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you. Consider approving the reclassification of the Administrative Clerk II to Administrative Clerk III in the Bradford County Prithonitaries Office, Grade 15, effective January 1st, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, we'll set the grades and salaries from Liam Lezick down through and including Anastasia Styret.
So moved per the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
And I apologize if I mispronounce her last name, but...
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
We'll move on to Assessment Board. There's no unfinished business. New business. Consider approving the following for tax exemptions, and I will read the names of those exemptions. There are Daniel Barnes, Brian Huckabee, Clifford Brayston Jr., Shane Jones, Kyle Silver, and Gary Cobb. They are either new or renewals.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve those exemptions per the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. All right. Visitors' remarks. Walter Wood.
I think the public deserves to know whether or not Sarah Fowler is the same Sarah Fowler that was removed from, I believe it was Harrisburg School District for torturing a child and had been convicted of a misdemeanor, especially since now she seems to be working in the library, running a book club or something, or reading time. So if you could make a statement at some point whether or not you had hired a child abuser and is having them work with children, I think for the better of the community, that should be done. Your attorney has said that he has looked into all of your violations that I've mentioned, or what I consider violations, and that none of them have actually been violations for the Sunshine Act. I was wondering where the agenda was posted 24 hours in advance on the building for this meeting. If you could tell us, because I had brought that up previously, and I looked around. I didn't see it anywhere. Chris isn't... Is he trying to talk or...
No, continues.
I believe the regroup contract is a violation of law, the way you've done it, and you actually have to re-sign a new one. Because it does have to be done in... Well, actually, I don't know why I'm getting time off for a Sunshine Act violation. Maybe you should talk to your attorney about that. But I believe you violate the Sunshine Act because you have to have a public meeting, even if it's an emergency meeting. You have to take minutes of the meeting. You have to have an agenda, I believe, of the meeting. You don't have to provide notice 24 hours in advance because it's an emergency.
Right.
But I believe those are violations of the law, and you guys should consider fixing that.
Hugh Austin.
Yeah, it seems to me today you just had a change in policy regarding public participation, a change in practice whereby Mr. Woods was not allowed to bring his Sunshine Act violation allegation against the commissioners. That is arbitrary and capricious, and I don't think it should be allowed. I think previous practice should allow itself to play out.
Sorry. Hold on, hold on. We got to put you on speaker, Chris.
Yeah. So, thank you for that comment. Do you have any others?
No, it's comments, yeah.
Depends on what you say.
Okay, then, next.
All right. James?
Has the budget, the county budget that you passed today, are there any changes in it compared to the county budget that you decided to put?
To put on the, put on the counter?
Yes.
Just maybe some minor changes you could get with Dan, our Chief Financial Director? He could explain if there were any changes. They're just minor subtle ones.
And the... Dan Thorpe told me that although you eliminated the $30,000 a year that you are providing for the Systems Administrator of the Bradford County Library System in the 2026 budget, that you kind of offset that for the coming year by providing an additional $24,000 to the system of Bradford County Public Libraries. And I think it was to, to sort of help soften the blow in that if the public libraries decided to keep the Systems Administrator position as a full-time position, they would need to somehow make up the $30,000 that you are not providing. And so this would, giving them, giving $24,000 to the library system would allow the library system to divide that among the public libraries that, that... So to kind of offset the difficulty that they would have in making the System Administrator position full-time. And I was wondering, given that the System Administrator position is going to be part-time, it's going to be at 20 hours a week, they're not going to, it's not going to become a full-time position. I'm wondering what's going to happen to the... Is the $24,000 still included in the budget?
I believe it is, yes, and it is intended to be pushed out to the local libraries around the county.
And is there, is there any restrictions on what the local libraries can use the money for?
No.
And I know that Doug in the past has talked about that he doesn't, he doesn't want... I think he's opposed to providing county funds to public libraries in the county other than the Bradford County Public Library. If they're going to do certain things that are not, like, I don't know, like having a... I don't know what he objects to exactly, like maybe having, like say, a person in drag read a story to a kid, or maybe there's certain books that these public libraries, that he would object to or citizens might object to because they don't like the content of them. Like maybe they're about like gay kids or something, adolescents, and what trials they're going through. I'm wondering, are you going to put any restrictions on the $24,000 as far as, like, censor, restricting what the libraries can use it for as far as purchasing materials or programs that they, putting on programs that they want to put on?
Can I address that? The question was already answered that those are unrestricted funds. We're not going to engage in a hypothetical. I understand that the commissioners engage in some back and forth with you guys and do answer some questions, but they're not just going to have an open-ended hypothetical discussion about what may happen.
Well, I think it's, I think the public deserves to know. If your, if your intention is to restrict...
Do you have any other public comments?
Okay, I'm a member of the press. Anyways...
This is press time, sir.
Also, and by the way, if you want to answer those questions, you guys, feel free to answer them. Answer that question if you're going to restrict the content.
So, yeah, it's already been dealt with.
Okay, and then, and then, well, not in the... Basically, you said there was no restrictions in the way they use the money, but I thought that was...
You didn't answer that. You wanted what we did answer.
He's allowed to speak, sir.
Yeah, he's allowed to speak, but he's just saying he wants to answer.
You keep interrupting me there. Like I'm doing right now to you. Seems annoying, doesn't it?
He's allowed to speak, and my answer is we're not going to answer that no matter how many times you ask. The funds currently are unrestricted. We're not going to engage in hypotheticals about what may happen.
Okay, and...
I was saying, why recently?
Yeah. I was, for that, for the grant that you're seeking from the Local Share Assessment Grant for the, for the Prithonitaries Office, for Prithonitary Software Upgrades, what software upgrades is she doing, is Tammy Hart going to be doing there?
Do you have any... Could you go ahead, Lez?
So the software that we are looking to operate to is the standard across Pennsylvania in most municipalities. It's called County Suites.
County Suites?
Yes, Suites, like a hotel suite. So County Suites, all one word. And that would replace a current system that is kind of a patchwork of three outdated systems. It would allow residents to have access to their cases and civil court proceedings online. And all of these are upcoming state mandates that we're going to have to comply with. So we're trying to get ahead of it and use these grant funds to be able to purchase the software. So we're in compliance by the time it's required.
And the cases that the public would have access to, is it criminal cases?
Not criminal, no. It would just be things handled by the Prithonitaries. So civil court, domestic relation court, those things. domestic relationship court, and Tammy can give you more information about what specifically would be available, but.
Okay. And, and as far as the, you're applying for a $297,000 grant from the, for the rehabilitation of the fire tower, and I, can you just like give a few details?
It's to enhance its structural integrity, because there's some structural issues with it, before we put it back up, the need to be addressed.
Can you, can, what?
It's just the framing, the structure itself needs to be, to be looked at and rehabbed and brought back up to its original capacity.
Just, you got to make sure it's safe.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Because the public's going to be going up there.
Well, potentially, yes.
Okay, and.
CJ's going to use it for a tree stand.
And I didn't know if the amount that, that you're, you're applying for, for the Bradford County Treatment Court, which is $100,000, if that's changed from past.
It's about the same, I think, I don't know if it's changed a lot, it's in that neighborhood.
Okay, same with the Bradford County Adult Probation and Parole Grant Aid Amount that you're applying for from Pennsylvania, which on crime of delinquency is $84,000?
It's probably about the same, isn't it?
That's about the same.
Yeah.
And, and is there, as far as the Black Fly Suppression Program, is there any doubt that you're going to get the money?
I'm pretty sure they allocate that money year in and year out.
Okay.
Mrs. Sullivan would not be happy if, if they didn't.
Okay.
Nor would I be happy, but, her less happier than me.
And, and can you talk about why, why you selected Joe Quatrini to be the District Manager?
He has a phenomenal background, he's worked for the district for, I believe, 20-plus years, an outstanding background and interest in serving the county in that capacity, and he's got a lot of experience that he's bringing to the table, and he just, he'll make a great District Manager.
And, did, how was that position filled, did you?
It was advertised internally.
Okay, were there, were there other applicants?
There was one other applicant, but the applicant withdrew himself.
Yeah, okay. And, okay, so, then also, why, why are you creating a Deputy Director of Planning and Grants position? You already have a Director of Planning and Grants, which, Dwayne Nago, like, why are you creating a Deputy?
Karen Dunn.
Office continuity and support.
So you, so there's, there's, I mean, there's going to be too, is it too much work for one person to do, to do the job you're doing?
No, it's not, but there's two different areas that we're worried about covering.
What are those?
The grants piece and the planning piece, and there needs to be some continuity so that if I'm out of the office, someone else can lead, or if they're out of the office, I can cover for them.
And, and both positions would be full-time?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And, I mean, okay, do you really have enough grants that you're, have to administer or apply for that justifies another?
That's a great segue.
What?
Well, I was going to address it during Commissioner comments, so I'll just say that I think you're going to get an answer to your, your question when it comes time for Commissioner comments.
Okay, and, also, you just created a Deputy Director for your wastewater treatment plant, do you have a full-time director already?
Uh-huh.
And is the Deputy Director going to be full-time?
Uh-huh.
So, and does that, that plant only, does it really need two people full-time?
Yes, it does.
Why is that?
The amount of, the amount of work that goes into maintaining and operating that plant, to the standards set by the EPA and DEP require that we have licensed wastewater treatment plant operators, both, because you need it 24-hour, 24-hour a day, seven days a week.
I understand, James, that takes the effluent from the Bradford County Bradford Hills, it takes it from northern to your solid waste authority, the landfill, and it also receives from Bradford County Correctional Facility, and so.
I can mention it's 24/7.
That's what I just said, no, yeah.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
It's okay. So, the idea is, is if you're required for a 24/7 job, you really ideally need to have an individual who is there when the, when the lead director is not available, or is on vacation, or out on leave, that you have somebody else who can step in, and also is there to be able to have the authority to sign reports or information that needs to be submitted to the DEP. So that's another piece of this, similar to when you have continuity in a planning department, having somebody who has the vested authority to be able to sign off on things if the director is not there.
So you need, in other words, you need a Director or, you need a Director or Deputy Director 24/7 there?
The accessibility, yes, to be able to respond.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
At least on call.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And then, um.
Doug, we're getting a lot of feedback, buddy.
Getting a lot of feedback, Doug.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, I'm going to just say this, okay, you guys can, stand outside for a minute. Stole, we stand outside. I have, shut the doors. Please stand outside. I'll get out, hold on. I just can tell you this much, I have an eight-year-old child in my car, listening to this meeting and sharing the day, going down to the South Lakes, the United States Combat Hero, and he had to listen to the freaking cross concerts and everything else, James, now I've got to explain it to him, and poor child in the, in the car, I am so mad at you. You guys, if you have a child and you want to discuss something with him, that's your free right, my eight-year-old son, I choose not to, and I don't appreciate what he just listened to, an open public meeting, enough said.
Um.
I am mad, my child, he doesn't need to listen to that.
Okay, so, I think that those are, those are all my questions.
Kevin?
I just want a bit more about the historic fire tower, that's at Mount Pisgah?
Will be, yes.
Oh, that will be, okay. You said it was donated?
Mm-hmm.
Who donated it?
Jones, Greg Jones, from Troy, from Troy.
And who's like managing that project?
Our, our maintenance department.
Okay.
Yep.
And, if I may ask, what, what is Doug up to?
Moving down, Chris McLeod, Chris McLeod is a Bradford County resident, and he's getting promoted to Colonel?
He's a Lieutenant Colonel of National Guard, two tours of combat, he oversaw tank battalion, this guy has been in tough places, and we appreciate all our vets and all our active service people. Chris is a homegrown Bradford County guy, 32 years in military, started in the Navy, he is an American hero like, like many others, but today they have a full-blown program celebration for him to go to full colonel, which is a big deal, by taking his son Jack down, he's part of this program today, as well as taking my son now, and my two grandchildren now, they, to maybe get a chance to see the military in a, in a really great moment and maybe affect all these kids' lives, and maybe doing, maybe serving in our military someday, so Chris McLeod will be a full colonel, we can't say enough about him, like I said, two tours of combat, you know, he's been over two deployments overseas, as we have many in Bradford County, just a special moment for, for him in our county.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner's comments?
I have some press questions.
How's it going?
The, the thing I want to say for the commissioners, and it's kind of segue off of the question that James asked, is there enough work? I think you've seen, hopefully, over the past year, an increase in the number of grant applications that have been submitted, and grant applications that have been granted, and I'm glad that our planning, a member of our planning staff here, Liz Burgess, is here, because in a prior meeting, we talked about applying for a particular grant, and actually two, and I wanted to just offer a little bit of color on that, and maybe, Liz, you can provide a very brief discussion of the two grants and the news on those.
Yeah, yeah, so just in an expansion of this position and trying to better the community and get money flowing into Bradford County from sources that haven't previously, we have applied for, sorry, seven grants over the last six months, that were not previous pots of money that we accessed, and we received news yesterday that we were approved for two ultra-competitive state grants provided by the PCCD under the Burn State Crisis Intervention Program. So this is a program that was started in 2022 to address gun violence and try to improve the health of different communities across the state. Unfortunately, Bradford County has a really high suicide statistic, it's more than double the state average in both 2022, 2023, and 2024, and it's on track to be the same in 2025. The majority are firearm suicides, and this specific grant addresses firearm suicide rates. So we, as a county, through the Department of Human Services, we applied for two different initiatives, the first is a firearm suicide prevention intervention and postvention initiative, this was very competitive, it was a million dollars, it was only going to be between four and six grants, we were approved for $61,000, and this is going to create a crisis intervention team in Bradford County. So this is something in more populated counties, it's become more and more popular, and has become an evidence-based way to help people in crisis, so this is going to train about 90 of our first responders and officers in the county to be part of a crisis intervention team. They will have specific de-escalation tactics, they'll have, you know, they'll be trained in mental health counseling, so when they go out to a call, tragedy can be avoided. We also were awarded a local solicitation grant, so this is just part of the yearly Burn State Grant that's given out, and this was for $126,000, and this is going to be a firearm suicide awareness campaign throughout the county. So you should see over the next 18 months, billboards are going to start popping up, radio advertisements are going to start popping up, and it's all going to be directed at showing compassion and showing hope and community that there are resources available in Bradford County. This is also going to be a giveaway for handgun safes and gun safe resource cards, so it'll be part that people can fill out at, you know, different events throughout the county, put resources, their own personal resources on them, and then store them with their firearms. And this will be an initiative in the schools, using some evidence-based practices, including Gizmo, the Mental Health Dog, which is a book and giveaway, that's a really sensible way for kids to start having conversations about mental health. So, we're really excited, we want to get this kind of shocking statistic down, and this is going to be for the better of the community, and we're, we're really glad to have been awarded them.
Well, we thank you for the work, I mean, that takes a lot of work, and people don't realize how much work goes into these grant applications and stuff, and to do that, to bring monies into the county for projects like this, I mean, it's really great, and thank you very much for all that you do, I mean, it's, it's, it's a huge undertaking, and we thank you for doing it, and I think you're involved a little bit in that.
Yes, I am.
And I did want to say thank you, thank you, everyone who's going to be working on this, we look forward to seeing some, hopefully, some success in the.
Yeah, I think our goal needs to be not just mental health, but get people secure their firearms safely, and the rest is, we're getting the hits, and people will learn how, and how to use.
All right, motion to adjourn, unless anybody else had anything else?
Can I say something about the $24,000 that James said about the library? That stayed eight, James, okay? Earmark for the library system of Bradford County.
All right, motion to second, you going to second, Doug?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.